Good evening, everyone. I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have all members present and our student members also here this evening, so we do have a quorum. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Jake Puterman. Jake is a kindergarten student at Morgansville Elementary School, and Jake is here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Would you stand, please?
(inaudible)
(inaudible) Thank you. Good evening, Jake. Would you like to stay there at the microphone a little bit, so we can talk with you?
No. Not really.
How are you this evening? Good? Could you speak up a little louder? How are you? Good. I'm glad. Do you have some people with you this evening that you'd like to introduce to us? Could you tell us who they are? Who are these people here on the front row? Your mom and your sister. Welcome, Mom. Welcome, sis. Jake, how are things at Morgansville? They're good? Do you have things that you like to do there in kindergarten? Could you share some of those things? Did you say you like to write sentences? I'm impressed. I'm very impressed. And you, do you like to read? Wonderful. Wonderful. And when you're not in school, what do you like to do, Jake? When you're not in school, what do you like to do?
I like to play games.
Play games. That's great. That's great. Colleagues, do you have anything you'd like to ask Jake?
Jake, who's the lady in the second row there?
Yeah. Mrs. Wolford.
Mrs. Wolford? And how do you know her?
She is the principal.
Oh, yes, she is. She's the principal at Morgansville. Well, Jake, you look very handsome this evening. I love that bow tie.
Yeah.
And we thank you so much for coming out to lead us in the pledge in the moment of silence. So, good luck to you back there in kindergarten. Thank you so much.[326.33][326.33](applause) Mom and sis, you're welcome to stay if you would like, and if not, you can slip out at any time. Thank you so much for bringing him this evening. Okay, at this time, we'll have approval of this evening's agenda. Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have a unanimous vote, and the student member concurs. We'll move on then for approval of the minutes.
Madam President, I do have quite a few here to go through, so I have five motions, and I'll start with the first one. I move for the approval of the work session minutes dated Tuesday, December 10th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs.
On the second motion, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, December 10th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any discussion, any addition or corrections? All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have seven affirmative votes.
On motion three, the approval for the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, December 10th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor? Okay, we have seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs.
Motion number four, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, January 17th, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? All those in favor? Okay, we have seven affirmative votes.
On the fifth and final motion, I move for the approval of the compliance checklist and written statement minutes dated Tuesday, January 7th, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any additions or corrections to that checklist? No? Okay, all those in favor? Yes, seven affirmative votes. All right, our next item of business is the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael.
Thank you, President Williams. I'm honored tonight, we have an opportunity to recognize some of our top academic achieving students. These are students, already juniors and seniors, that have already received information back on their AP scores. These are not graduates yet at this point, but they've already had successful news on at least three AP exams. And I'm going to ask Mr. Berman if he would just describe the students that he's going to introduce. We could have a little mix-up tonight. This is a rescheduled event from our snow night, so we hope we have our RSPs correct and have everyone's certificate, but we're going to honor them as soon as Mr. Berman's ready. So...
Good evening, Dr. Michael, members of the board.
Let's make sure you're hot here on your mic.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, Dr. Michael, and members of the board. This evening, we'd like to recognize our students who have made outstanding achievements on advanced placement exams during the 2018-2019 school year. It is important to note, we are not able to recognize last year's graduating seniors, but we invited current juniors and seniors this evening. We are excited to honor these students who were able to join us. We will start by recognizing AP scholars. These students received scores of three or higher on three or more AP exams.
Board members?
(inaudible)
Michaela Cunningham, Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. Leslie Taylor, Boonsboro High. Silvana Tipson, Boonsboro High. Raven Cook, Clear Spring High. Madison Hull, Clear Spring High. Megan Stouch, Clear Spring High. Christopher Thomas, Clear Spring High. Caitlin Dillard, North Hagerstown High School. Andrea Trumbull, North Hagerstown High School. Shannon Whitechuck, North Hagerstown High School. Christian Robinson, North Hagerstown High School. Morgan Reese, Smithburg High School. Carlin Blash, South Hagerstown High School. Mackenzie McCarter, South Hagerstown High School. Emma Wyker, South Hagerstown High School. Hannah Wyker, South Hagerstown High School. Chris Buhyder, Washington County Technical High School. Jude Clark, Washington County Technical High School. Lumisha Vista, Williamsport High School. Zane Chalker, Williamsport High School. Addison Miller, Williamsport High School. Once again, these are our AP scholars, students who received three or higher on three or more AP exams. What is that? Soon as we finish with the fourth picture, we'll get out of the way if you have to take all the pictures you want, so something to be very crowded.
Everyone should be standing at a window. Maybe that's the guy for someone's head. Mr. Clark, I'm going to have you be the background. Each down one, and then let's close in here. Okay. Thank you for adjusting. And then check the mic. Everyone up here, I'm going to have you scoot in. Actually, everyone's standing, but it's too gentle. There you go. Okay. Great, everyone good smiles here on three. One, two, three. For everyone happy, hold it for two. Another one here on three. One, two, three. Last one for good measure. One, two, three.
All right, the majority of these students are already enrolled, initial AP passes this year as juniors and seniors, but already with accomplishments. The grades are high, and the students are pretty good, so congratulations.
Our next group are the AP Scholars with Honor. Those students who have received an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on four or more of these exams. Louis Wang, Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. Stephanie Vicarte, AP Scholar with Honor, Barbara Ingram School for the Arts. Lauren Kaufman, Boonsboro High School. Lauren Asbury, North Hagerstown High School. Catherine Jordan, North Hagerstown High School. Ellie Welsh, South Hagerstown High School. Gage Tozier, Washington County Technical High School. Nolan Zam, Washington County Technical High School. Nicholas Hose, Williamsport High School. Alexander Huffer, Williamsport High School. Once again, these are the AP Scholars with Honor.[1144.16][1144.16](applause)
There. Take a little step to your right. Yep. And same with this. Okay, good, good smile there on three. One, two, three. And another one. One, two, three. Last one. Just run our class to the right a little bit. Mr. Stauffer to the right a little bit. I'm getting in here somehow. One, two, three.
Finally, I'd like to recognize AP Scholars with Distinction. Those students who received an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams. Christopher Lee, Boonsboro High School. Christopher is also a National AP Scholar. Olivia Stevens, Boonsboro High School. Amy Kessler, South Hagerstown High School. Sadie Lysinger, South Hagerstown High School. These are our AP Scholars with Distinction.[1344.16][1344.16](applause)
Smile here on three. One, two, three. Another one. One, two, three. Last one. One, two. (inaudible)
Williams, while we're getting the room set back up, I'd just like to thank the principals for coming tonight. Also, I want to thank all the teachers of the AP courses. While we have very, very bright, hard-working students, I think I can't, I can't say enough about our staff that work extremely hard to help our students be successful well, as well. I mean, this is a tremendous accomplishment. These are children that in the past generally wouldn't even have an AP class until you're a senior. So, we already have results back from last year's AP test, and for some students, from tests two years ago. And you've heard the accomplishments, some with three, some with four, some with five, where they already have a three or higher, and the average of all their exams are extremely high. So, this is, this is very impressive, and we're glad to celebrate with them, because many of these students will earn even higher awards, but they'll be off to college next year, and we won't have the opportunity to honor them. So, that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Okay, at this time, we'll have public comment. This evening, we have one person who has signed up in advance, Mr. Carlos Malott. Is Mr. Malott here? Yes, there he is. Good evening.
Good evening.
You're familiar with the process and the timeframe and all of that?
Yes, ma'am. Not the first time with the radio.
All right.
And we adhere to it strictly for you. Yes, sir. Of course. Yes, sir. Good evening, Dr. Michael, President Williams' elected board. My name is Carlos Malott, representative of the Washington County Teachers Association. Just really brief comments tonight. First and foremost, I just would like to thank Mr. Stauffer for visiting Funkstown Elementary School. On behalf of our members at that school, we are thankful that you took the time to come out and connect with staff. Although nothing may change regarding the plans for that school, a visit from an elected BOE member can go a long way in terms of staff feeling heard. By visiting this school, it demonstrates that you're seeking out more information and looking at the conditions on the ground and in the trenches prior to making any decisions. So, thank you, Mr. Stauffer. I would just like to invite, encourage, and respectfully request that all BOE members make regular visits to schools, as much as your schedule allows, as much as you can. Not with the intent of surprising administrators or even dipping your hands in the personnel pot, but rather to get into the schools and see the great things that are happening, as well as the challenges. I believe that as elected Board of Education members, that you have the right, and I would even argue maybe the responsibility to visit schools. So, that's it. Thank you very much. Have a good evening, and thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Malott. Is there anyone else who would like the opportunity to come forward to address the board? Okay? No? Mr. Bickford, I believe you have something?
Yeah. Madam President, I was contacted by a concerned parent who wanted to make sure her voice was heard about the Potomac Center, and she has sent a statement. She couldn't unfortunately make it tonight to read the statement to us, but she has provided it along with comments from other concerned parents about the Potomac Center, so I will be happy to forward that to all board members, as well as to Deb Chekovitch, who will make sure that's included as part of our public comments.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bickford. All right, we'll move on then to board member response to public comment. Colleagues, do you have anything in response? Okay. We'll move on then to old business. Our first and only item of old business this evening is the second reading of proposed changes to policy KCE, school volunteers. Mr. Trotter?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
When December 10th, 2019, the Board of Education approved the first reading of the proposed changes to policy KCE, two individuals submitted comments on the proposed changes, and those comments were shared with all the members of the Board of Education. The policy committee members reviewed the comments during their public work session, which was conducted on January 14th, 2020. I can provide an overview of the comments. The first was, there was a question as to whether the policy applied to all types of classes, including classes for special needs students... including classes for special needs students, and the answer to that is in the affirmative, the policy applies to all types of classes. There was a recommendation that when an individual offers to volunteer, but their request is not honored, that they should be given a written reason why their request was denied. There was a concern expressed that a parent with a misdemeanor drug possession conviction would be denied the opportunity to volunteer. It was explained during the policy committee meeting that the policy applies to individuals convicted of possession, use, or sale of controlled, dangerous substances, and not misdemeanor types of convictions, such as possession of marijuana, small amounts. After due consideration of the comments, the policy committee is requesting the Board of Education to approve the second reading of the proposed changes to policy KCE. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy KCE entitled "School Volunteers."
Mrs. Fisher, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Discussion? Mrs. Fisher, would you like to begin?
I would just add to Mr. Trotta's comments that in making this decision, the principal of the school, or if he's not, he or she is not there, his or her designate would have the final decision.
Discussion, and we'll move to the vote. Our vote is on the second reading of proposed changes to policy KCE, school volunteers. Please raise your hand for approval. We have, oh, okay, thank you, seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. We'll move now to new business, and our first item of new business is this evening's consent agenda. We have Mr. Bechtel, who's supervisor of purchasing with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, let's start over. Good evening, President Williams, board members, Dr. Michael. Tonight I have four items for your review. These items were reviewed by our purchasing review committee and are being recommended for approval, and staff is available if you have additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel, is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the awards renewals and procurements for network security assessment through Securants Consulting at a total cost of $50,922. The purchase of Chromebooks to CDWG at a total cost of $871,012.50. Interpreting services for deaf or hard-of-hearing individuals to the vendors listed on the exhibit at the unit prices listed. And student information system through Edgepoint Educational Systems at a total cost of $112,925.75.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford, is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Questions for Mr. Bechtel, or any discussion? No, then we'll move to the vote. Voting approval of tonight's consent agenda on Mr. Bickford's motion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We have seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next item of consideration is a contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators, known as WACASA, for the 2020-2021 school year.
Mrs. Williams, I'm pleased to report this evening we've reached agreement with our meet and confer process of the administrator and supervisor group. Tonight, we're prepared to sign that document pending your approval. Also, it's clear that this is pending funding availability, since we're early in the budgeting process. So we're seeking your approval of the agreement. It's been provided to you, and then we'll ask for comments from Ms. Baker and Dr. Tchulakka.
Thank you, Dr. Michael, is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators for the 2020-2021 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ridenhour. Any discussion, any questions? All those in favor of approval of the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Supervisors and Administrators for the 2020-2021 school year, please raise your hand. We have seven affirmative votes. Motion carries.
The opportunity for Mike to make comment, and we also have documents available for your signature, Mr. Williams.
Dr. Michael, President Williams, elected board, we just want to say thank you for your cooperation, your generosity, and partnership that has been longstanding, and we hope that it continues to be longstanding. We feel that the approved contract will go a long way for administrators, and we feel confident that this will help us serve our community and our students and the board. So, thank you.
Terry, do we have documents?
You keep one and I keep one?
I think so. I think that's all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Okay, at this time, we have consideration of the district assessment committee appointments, and we have Dr. Bishop presenting first.
Good evening, Dr. Michael, President Williams, and elected board members. I'm here this evening to seek your approval of the members nominated for the district assessment committee. As required by COMAR and part of the More Learning Less Testing Bill of 2017, we form a district assessment committee every two years in collaboration with the Washington County Teachers Association. The purpose of the committee is to monitor that the required student testing time at each grade level is 2.2% or less than a student's total school time, and to review all required county assessments. Our first meeting is scheduled in February, and we plan to meet four times this spring. The committee members include the supervisor of testing and accountability, the WCTA president and UNISERV director, three school administrators and three teachers, one at each level, a parent, and a student. At this time, I formally ask for your approval of the assessment committee members.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, is there a motion? President Williams?
I move to approve the committee members nominated for the District Committee on Assessments.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher, any questions or any discussion? All those in favor of approval of the committee members nominated for the District Committee on Assessment, please raise your hand. We have seven affirmative votes, motion carries.
And thank you, Chris, for joining us.
We'll move to consideration of board member standing committee assignments. Members, you received a list of the committee assignments, and I'll read them, and then we'll have our motion. Serving on the curriculum and instruction committee for 2020 is Linda Murray as chairwoman, Michael Gessford, and myself. Serving on the facilities committee, we have Michael Gessford as chairman, Stan Stauffer, and Peter Bickford. On the finance committee, we have Peter Bickford serving as chairman, Linda Murray, and Stan Stauffer. For the human resources committee, we have Wayne Ridenhour as chairman, Jacqueline Fisher, and Michael Gessford as members. And for the policy review and development committee, we have Jacqueline Fisher as chairwoman, Stan Stauffer, and Melissa Williams. So those are the recommended standing committee assignments. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the recommended standing committee assignments.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the recommended standing committee assignments. Okay, we have seven affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we'll have the second half of the superintendent's report. Back to you.
President Williams, at this time, I'd like to invite Allison Smith, our supervisor of equity and excellence, to come forward. She's going to share a little bit about the work she's been doing since she's joined our team, and probably a little bit more about the work she's going to be doing here in the near future, so. Ms. Smith?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to bring you an equity update for Washington County Public Schools. I'd like to begin by providing the foundation for our equity work and what it's built upon. As you know, in October of 2019, the State Department of Education passed a new educational equity policy, which establishes educational equity as a priority for every school system in Maryland. The new policy sets forth a number of requirements that we must adhere to, and I've highlighted just a few. Each local school system must develop an educational equity policy and regulations with the goal of providing educational equity to all students. We must also provide tailored and differentiated professional learning to build capacity for cultural responsiveness to address areas of inequity identified by school systems. We should also direct the identification and utilization of resources to provide equitable access to educational opportunities and services by the use of disaggregated student data to analyze trends, identify gaps, and equitable solutions. We must also identify partnerships with the Maryland State Department of Education, local government agencies, and stakeholders to support educational equity. So with all this talk of equity, I thought this would be a good time to make sure that we're all on the same page about what equity means. Sometimes we confuse equity with equality. They are not synonymous and mean slightly different things. So if you visualize this graphic that's on the screen, it becomes really clear what equity is. It's very simple. It means that each child receives what he or she needs to develop to his or her full academic and social potential, regardless of whichever cultural group they might belong to. So with that in mind, I'd like to identify the primary goal of the Washington County Public Schools Equity and Excellence Initiative. We are going to promote student achievement and equity through culturally responsive classroom practices, rigorous, unbiased curricula, and providing human and capital resources that best meet the needs of a diverse student population. Washington County Public Schools and the Board of Education are no stranger to the work of equity and diversity. In fact, you've been doing this for the last at least 15 years. Various committees and task forces have been convened, and recommendations were made to support improved student achievement, because that's really what the work is about. Policies such as the student discipline policy that was approved in August of 2019, and the diversity policy that was approved in September of 2015 have all been examples of the work that you've done regarding equity and diversity as you try to meet the needs of our ever-changing students here. And as a response to the recommendation made by one of the committees formed in August of 2019, I came on as supervisor of equity and excellence to continue your work, primarily focusing in three important areas. Providing support for the development of the Washington County Public Schools equity policy, focusing on equity and the achievement gap that exists between our highest performing and our lowest performing students. And finally, developing professional learning opportunities and providing training for Washington County Public Schools staff. So as we enter into the second half of this year, we're focusing on three action goals. Goal number one is to increase the awareness of senior leadership and central office leadership regarding matters of culture, ethnicity, and race, including biases related to these topics. In fact, senior leadership has begun their monthly meetings this month in January, and we are looking forward to time together each month for the balance of the school year. In addition, we've been working together with the policy committee to develop the educational equity policy for Washington County Public Schools, ensuring that there's alignment between the state's policy and the local policy that's going to be developed here, as required by COMAR. The development of the policy and professional learning for senior leadership reinforces this idea. The knowledge and skills to educate all children already exist. There are no pedagogical barriers to teaching and learning when willing people are prepared and made available to children. You've already demonstrated this sentiment with the tremendous work you do with supporting the development of policies for Washington County Public Schools. We have a great leadership team committed to serving every single kid. We have a fantastic teaching and support staff who are second to none. And finally, we have a caring committee, community committed to providing the best possible educational experience for all students. Working together, we can achieve our common goal. Goal two, to develop a professional learning plan to build the capacity of Washington County Public Schools staff regarding equity. So we will expand the learning opportunities to other system leaders and teachers as well. So in February of 2020, we will bring onboard our mentor teachers and new teaching staff. And in later this spring, we'll move to including our content supervisors. Our work regarding equity will hinge on this important idea. The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much, it is whether we provide enough for those who have too little. Again, this work is not about taking anything away from anyone, but about ensuring that every student has the necessary resources to succeed. Each training cohort will participate in a series of training modules broken into three phases. We are currently in the awareness phase, where we will engage in learning about what equity is and what it looks like, which leads to commitment to the equity work by determining actions that need to take place in order to improve student achievement and work toward eliminating the achievement gap. Our final goal is to establish relationships with the community, Maryland school districts, and organizations connected to the equity work. We will look for opportunities to connect with community stakeholder groups, collaborate with other Maryland school districts to share ideas related to training, and partner with the Maryland State Department of Education while serving as liaison to ensure that our Board of Education is current on equity work that is happening around the state. This is likely the most important goal of all, because this work cannot be done in isolation. It requires the collective effort of every stakeholder group to ensure that every student is college and/or career-ready, and that depends largely on the work that you do. Thank you for your time, your support, and your commitment, and all that you're doing to support student achievement.
Allison will be glad to respond to any questions you might have. She obviously is not going anywhere, she's got a lot of work to do, and will be working with the policy committee and the board as they move forward with the policy committee. And hopefully sometime in the future, maybe even some additional workshops for the board. We did have our first meeting, I think we had 16 or 17 of us. Now we've expanded senior leadership team, include a lot of department heads around the system. And we're off to an excellent start with our training so far. So if you have any questions for Allison, I invite you to ask her, or Allison certainly can come back another time as well.
All these questions? Welcome, welcome aboard, we're so happy to have you.
Happy to be here.
And as you say, it is about having a common vision and a collective commitment and action. And I know that this board is wanting very much to focus on the achievement of each and every child in our system. No exceptions, no excuses. So we look forward to our work together.
I will look forward to partnering with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next part of the report. I'd like to invite Paula Moore and Maria Margovich Horvich to give us an update on our access testing. We're right in the middle of testing, I think, right now, of our English language learners. I want the board to be aware of the work and the achievements of our English language learners, as well as our staff that work so hard. Earlier in our budget work session today, we talked about the numbers of English language learners that have increased substantially. I think in recent years, from around 400, we kind of were holding steady there, to now over 600 students. Fortunately, many of these students exit services as a result of the hard work of general education teachers, the EL staff and support team, obviously from their parents and the work of themselves. So our numbers would be skyrocketing well beyond the 600-plus number we have right now. Team, you take your way?
President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board, Mrs. Moore, I are happy to present the... I are happy to present the Access for ELL data for the 2018-2019 school year. The number of students identified as English learners in Washington County has nearly doubled in the past seven years from 377 to 624, with the most rapid increase occurring in the past three years. Access for ELLs is a state assessment that measures English proficiency in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. All students identified as an English learner in kindergarten through 12th grade take this assessment. The testing window is occurring right now and goes into the middle of February. Results from Access for ELLs are used for accountability purposes to measure English language proficiency on Maryland's report card. The targets are based on the first test that the students take, so when they enter our system, they participate for the first time. After that first participation, we set their targets and we measure, they determine how much progress the student needs to make in order to exit within five years or shorter, depending on their proficiency of English when they arrive. For Washington County Public Schools at the elementary level, 74% of our students this year are making progress to their learning goals of learning English. 58% of our students at the middle school level are making progress to those goals, and 64% of our students at the high school level are making progress. When we rank ourselves against other counties that have a reportable subgroup, which is at least 10 students within the county, for elementary, we are tied for fourth at that 74%. That translates for our accountability system out of 10 points to 7.4 out of 10 points for the district. For middle school, we are tied for fifth in the state. And at high school, we are ranked second in the state for progress on that learning English learner instruction is aligned to the National English Language Development Standards and Maryland College and Career Readiness Standards. In elementary, English learner teachers use the WCPS Essential Curriculum in Science, Math, Social Studies, and ELA to develop academic English, so students can better access the content through a push-in model. In middle and high school, English learners are enrolled in English learner courses offered in the WCPS Program of Studies, with high school students earning World Language Credits for their English learner coursework.
Okay. Do Board members have any questions about the ELL? Looks like there are a few, Mrs. Williams.
Can you just briefly tell us, and those listening, how this test is administered? The four aspects of it: Listening, reading, speaking, writing. Have any questions? What's the time limit?
Sure. We typically test a domain each day, and each domain can take anywhere between an hour and an hour and a half. Approximately on reading and listening, there are about 30 questions that students answer. Speaking, they have six tasks that they have to complete, where it's recorded on the iPad or the computer that they're taking it on. And then writing, they have three tasks that they need to write to.
What would be one of the tasks? What would be an example?
On which do you mean, like, speaking?
Well, on, say, reading.
Okay. So, reading would look very similar to the tasks that we would give to them on a reading assessment that we would give in the county, so they would have some text in front of them, and then they would have to answer a few questions based on the text.
And the writing?
Writing would be the same. There would be a prompt. So usually, the three tasks are tiered. They start off with an easier task, and then they become a little bit more difficult, and they would have to respond to that. Typically, it's writing a letter, an argumentative essay, a five-paragraph essay that they might have to write. And then for speaking, they actually talk into the device, and they're given a prompt, and it's usually an academic prompt. And it's always, there are always questions that are aligned to either the language of science, the language of English language arts, the language of social studies, et cetera, and they would have to record their answers on technology. They have about 30 to 45 seconds to respond to a task, and then they click through to the next one. It's a very challenging test.
I'm just curious, do we know what situations or events have accounted for our rapid growth in English learners the last three years?
This is a trend that's around the state. So every year, each supervisor, we have to report out if there's a variance of 5% or more of student enrollment, and I believe this year of the 24 counties, at least eight of us had to fill out that variance report that we had more than 5%. There are some districts that are growing at 20%, 30%, 40% a year, so.
Thank you.
We've actually been kind of stable compared to the other counties, but we are growing.
I'm sorry, if you may, or explain this, but what is a push-in model?
So our English learner teachers will collaborate with the classroom teacher, look at the lesson plan, look at the standards that they're working with students, and they will go actually into the classroom, because we believe excellent initial instruction is the priority. So we don't want to pull kids out of their class and have them miss science, or math, or social studies. So the English learner teacher will push in. So a great example could be when they do guided reading groups. Usually, students will have a reading group with their classroom teacher, there'll be a group there, and then independently, students will be reading and doing different activities in different stations. So it could look like the classroom teacher is leading a reading group, and the English learner is also leading a reading group, but just with English learners. Usually, it could be them working in the back of the classroom on something that's similar to what the other students are doing, but they're scaffolding the work or differentiating it, so the student can have the language to be able to complete the tasks.
Okay, good. Thanks. ELL students really come to us with a wide range. Some students have been in formal schooling. We do have some students that enter Washington County that haven't had a substantial form of schooling, particularly in middle school and high school. I think that's true. You know, very, very bright students, and students that have, you know, some learning disabilities, just like anybody else. I think some of the greatest work that I've seen of actually are between students. Sometimes I can tell when I'm talking with a student, they don't have a clue what I'm saying, and all of a sudden, their buddy next to them is helping them respond to what I might be asking or sharing with me, that they don't know very much English at this point, but they'll start doing some interpreting. So some of our students are working right alongside with our ELL staff and our GND staff to support these students.
It's great to see the rankings, and I'm thrilled for the learners, and I'm thrilled for our teaching staff as well, and for you, Mrs. Markovich, and you especially, Dr. Moore, or Mrs. Moore, that you put so much work into the program. So my question to you is, what's happening in Worcester and Calvert Counties that they're, with their programs? Do we have any idea of, are they doing something different than push-in programs, or are they using something, does it have to do with the population of learners, or any idea?
I work really closely with the supervisors around the state. I know in Calvert, they have, they just have a different group of English learners. So for example, that supervisor says in Calvert, many of the students that they have are actually adopted. So we have American, English-only-speaking families adopting the students, and so they're immersed more in an English-speaking environment with parents who know how to really navigate the American school system and really support them in that English-language-rich environment. Of course, with our students, we encourage that dual proficiency. We want students to continue speaking their home language. It's a part of their culture, it's a part of who they are, it's part of that family unit, so, you know, I think that's one of the things that looks different.
Thank you. Is there something more that we could be doing for our learners? If you had a wish list, is there something additional, something more that we could be providing these students?
I think if you were to ask any supervisor, we would all say the same thing, that more staff always helps with some of the more resources. I think that's one of the reasons that we continue to improve, and we have the results that we do, is that this Board has done a very nice job of supporting Dr. Michael's budget, and, you know, supporting the teachers that we need, that we are actually keeping up with that. Some of the other school systems are not.
How many different schools would have had an English language learner? An English learner, I'm sorry.
So we have 45 schools in the school system. I believe right now, we have English learners in approximately 37, 38 schools. Probably 10 years ago, it would have, you would have really only seen it in the city schools. Probably maybe 20 schools if we were lucky.
So, without real hard numbers, you know, spreading from 20 schools to 37 schools, spreading from 40, excuse me, 400 students to over 600 students, I mean, this is a growing need for us to help address those students, and they deserve to be addressed in their home district and homeschool as much as possible. We find that to be the most successful, rather than a model that would move students together, I think. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Our next piece of Superintendent's report will kind of relate to this. We really believed that we would have even higher numbers than the 600-plus ELL students that we have right now if it wasn't for our pre-K program. What we're hearing from the pre-K teachers, many of their students come into their classroom, they do not speak English. English is not the language that is spoke at home. And through being with our pre-K team for a year, many of these students do not test into ELL services at kindergarten, which is truly the first grade that we actually test for ELL services. So I'd like to ask the technology team if they'd run a short video that our team pulled together, it's a couple of our parents that helped, that enrolled their child in pre-K.
Shared reading between parents and children is one of the best ways to help young learners succeed in their education. For this student and his mother, it's a multilingual experience. James, now in kindergarten at Hickory Elementary, completed the pre-K program last year. Starting school was a little unnerving, not just for a four-year-old who speaks Spanish, but for mom and dad, too.
When James first enrolled in pre-K, he was nervous and hesitant. His English skills were just beginning. Mom was very concerned about James enjoying his day at pre-K.
But those feelings softened, once his parents saw him growing socially, academically, emotionally.
Al principio no lo queríamos mandar a James, pero luego después de la emoción, la experiencia que vimos con él, nos motivó a que él siga yendo más a la escuela.
Nos sorprendía con cada cosa de que él nos decía, que él sabía, a veces cosas de que nosotros ni nos imaginábamos, y wow, cómo sabe tanto, y apenas está en pre-K.
In addition to the traditional milestones achieved in pre-K, James made impressive improvements in another area: Language.
Sí, el inglés de él evolucionó bastante.
In pre-K, James participated in English learner activities while staying engaged in the classroom with his peers. Now in kindergarten, he no longer needs English learner services.
James became friends with both the children that spoke Spanish and the children that spoke no Spanish at all, and slowly, James spoke more and more English. By the end of the year, James was one of the top readers in the class, and is showing huge success in kindergarten.
It's a similar story across the school system. Looking at students who speak a language other than English, about 83% of those students who completed pre-K with WCPS no longer needed English learner services this year in kindergarten. And the growth of the pre-K program is fueling that success. As pre-K has expanded to a full day at each elementary school in the county, more students are exiting English learner services by kindergarten.
The children come in speaking more than one language, or little English. By January, February, they are speaking English with their peers. They've learned the routines of the classroom, they're participating, they're raising their hands to volunteer, they are speaking English. And then little by little, they grow in that social language and the academic language that they're going to need to be successful in kindergarten.
Growing in language and their education. Now after seeing James's accomplishments in school, it will soon be time for little brother Jake to take his turn in pre-K.
Muchas personas no quieren mandar a su hijo a pre-K porque dicen no va a aprender, y sí, sí, aprenden mucho.
So I want to thank Erin and the team for pulling together that video, but I think that speaks volumes for our pre-K teachers and the people that work with these students. Also appreciate the parents that are in the video, their efforts to participate in the video, but also to encourage their friends to help enroll children in pre-K. It'd be a huge success story for them. Just a couple other announcements. Coming up, January 29th is the day in Annapolis for Washington County. Our tech high students are always a highlight of that evening event, so several of us will be down there supporting them, as they participate not only with our community, but the community there, a group of legislators in Annapolis that attend that. This weekend is All County Orchestra, so I'm always excited to see the talents of our students displayed, so I'll have an opportunity to hear that Saturday night. I believe the following weekend is All County Band, so I encourage the Board members, both those performances are at 7 o'clock. Always invite Denise out for dinner and a show, so that's our opportunities for a couple Saturday nights coming up here in a row. But our students are very, very talented, I mean, they do a fantastic job. It's a real pleasure to attend those events. Also, there's an arts reception coming up on Thursday, January 29th, the University of Maryland building downtown. Had the opportunity to go there last year and support our students in the arts, and prizes and awards are given for that. I don't think I'll be able to make it, I think that's the night of another one of our county-wide events here. So I don't know that I'll be able to attend, but it's an excellent event if parents or students can attend as well. And Mrs. Williams, I think that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Michael. I have Dr. Bishop next with Personnel Action.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Michael, and elected Board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review tonight. At this time, I ask for your approval of the personnel actions.
Madam President, a move to accept the personnel actions that were presented to us earlier today.
Now is your second. Any questions for Dr. Bishop? Okay, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of this afternoon's personnel actions as presented, please raise your hand. Seven affirmative votes, Marshall Cades, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll have our reports to the Board, and our first report is the legislative brief, the legislative briefing on the 2020 Maryland Legislative Session. Good evening, Mrs. Cade.
Good evening.
Welcome back to the table, Mr. Trotta.
It's very nice to be here and see all of you again, after many months of, between legislative sessions. The 2020 session is well underway. As you know, there is new leadership in both the House and the Senate. Mike Miller has now been made the President of the Senate Emeritus, and is still very active himself. He's going, he's on the Budget and Tax Committee, he goes to committee, he goes to the floor, so, and he looks really quite healthy. But he seems quite able to step aside and let new young leadership by Bill Ferguson take over. And in the House, Adrian Jones is doing a fine job, and she was elected, of course, last spring when Mike Bush died, and she is, again, I think, doing a very competent job, and relying a great deal on her committee chairman to bring things to her attention. So it's interesting. Several new committee chairmen and vice chairman, so trying to see those people and talk to them and get, make sure they get our point of view is important. Our delegation for, particularly for this session, is very well-placed. We have four of the members of the Washington County delegation are on the fiscal committees. And of course, with the Kerwin bill being the biggest with Kerwin and... And of course, with the Kerwin bill being the biggest with Kerwin and Bridge to Excellence, that is very, very helpful. Delegate Quarterman and Delegate McKay are on the Appropriations Committee. I saw them both yesterday and today. And Senator Sarafini and Senator Edwards are on the Budget and Tax Committee in the Senate. So, we have real good access to those committees which are making a lot of the decisions that are most important to you. I think people are fairly happy, there was a briefing yesterday on the governor's budget proposal. I think people in the whole are fairly happy with the governor's budget, but there'll be changes. The education regular formulas and the things that were passed last year in the Kerwin blueprint are all fully funded. Now, there was a $50 million, $58 million carryover, and the governor did portion that out quite differently from what the legislature had directed or proposed, or their proposal. There's much less in there now for the career readiness, which I think is something that people are concerned about. There's much more in for early childhood education, but people don't know whether the governor intends that for public or more for private. That hasn't been defined. There's more for the concentration of poverty, reducing the level of poverty from 80% to 75%. I understand that would change Washington County from having no community schools to having five community schools. So, that's an interesting and very significant one for you. And there's more for schools with declining enrollment, which doesn't help you at all. Looking overall at the, at the, at aid to local governments, 85% of all the aid to local governments goes to public schools. And interestingly, because of your change in your tax rate, you've become one of the higher per capita recipients, you being the county, as one of the higher per capita recipients of local aid, and one of the highest increases in local aid. And that, of course, is reflected particularly in the disparity grant, which went from two-something million to seven million. However, I understand that that same change in wealth has had a negative effect on your funding in, for your base amounts for education. So, you know, these formulas, as they change, as the wealth base of the county changes, things go up and things go down. But your staff is very up on all of this, much more than I am, how it's, all of this specifically affects your county.
Ms. Cade, I'm trying to understand all that. I think what I understand from that is because of the wealth availability out of income in Washington County, the reason potentially our foundation wasn't as much as we anticipated it being, it implies that there is money available at the county level to support education through that additional wealth and income. Is that how that's to be interpreted or not?
I have to admit that I really am not sure. I mean, I do know that you went from being a low-effort county to a higher-effort county, and that's why the disparity grant went up. But in terms of whether your reassessments of your whole county were what affected the wealth base primarily, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I'm not going to pretend like I know.
No, that's okay.
So, the, in the governor's budget comes in, the budget committees can cut things, they can't add to the budget, so they kind of have to, through the session, kind of negotiate with the governor, saying, well, if we take this out, can we, can you put in a supplemental budget that brings that money back in to be used a different way? And so, this, our governor has the highest, this state has the highest, the governor has the highest amount of control of the budget, I think, of any state in the country. So, it's a very strong executive budget. Many other states, the legislature actually puts together the budget. So, there's going to be a lot of tug-of-war going on over the next 80 days, and things will be happening, and so what I tell you now doesn't necessarily matter because it will, a lot of it will change. But interestingly, the governor, if, for instance, he, there's an increase for community colleges, but there was supposed to be a certain percentage increase for them, and he cut in half what the increase for community colleges was. I'm particularly interested always in that because the formula for the community college funding is named the Cade Formula from my late husband. The capital budget shows $340 million for education, and that's probably down because of the new Built to Learn Act and the potential of more resources coming in from that. And in the budget this year, there's no money for legislative initiatives, and that's always a pot of money where the, all the legislators have local bond bills. They will find money to have local bond bills. They'll, and they can increase the capital budget, they can't increase the operating budget. And Maryland, like I think most all other states, they cannot, they cannot end the session without having adopted a balanced budget. So, they have to stay till summer if they can't get that done. That's after the 90 days, if they don't have a budget passed, they have to stay and work on the budget. But they always manage to do it by the 89th and a half day. So, there's, there's a lot going on and a lot of learning going on, and things are just really starting to crank up. The Built to Learn bill, which is long, complicated, they resubmitted the bill that was introduced last year. It was a, it was, it passed one house but not the other last year. As you recall, this is the bill that allows the stadium, authorizes the Stadium Authority to issue up to $2.2 billion in revenue bonds. They're 30-year bonds that would be used for education construction. And so, this is like a new approach to, certainly supplements the funding that is there in the capital budget. And it is a method that allows for a lot of catch-up of the school, needed school construction. Now, it does, you know, if you have, if you spend a lot right now and you're paying back bonds over the years, and your, your future years are going to be restricted because you've used, you've used up your money to a certain extent. So, it's, it's got pros and cons, but it's a, it's a, it's a new approach, and there's a lot of interest in it. There are special provisions in it for Prince George's County because they're allowed under this to do, they call it P3, I think. It's, they can have somebody who designs, builds, operates the school, uh, building for them for 30 years, so that they, and they're looking at a, they're looking at an award. They have four, four teams that made proposals so that these schools would be built and operated, I mean, they would, they would run the school, but the, the building would be maintained by, as well as constructed by this team. So, it's a public-private kind of thing. It's, you know, it's not unlike what you did with, with the School for the Arts, but we were way ahead out here. You were the first. But the, the, there are some issues, of course, in this bill, and the biggest issue and one which I hope you will be, I know that Mr. Trotta is preparing proposed amendments, and this is the same issue we had with the bill last year. The bill, as it is currently drafted, provides that six counties in the state get almost 90% of the money, and that's, that the other counties get, this whole bundle of counties get only 11 and a half percent of the money of the authority, bond authority. And yet, these 17, 16, 17, 16, no, 18 school systems represent about 25% of the school population in the state. Well, in all, all manners of equity, any way you talk about equity, it's clear that for 25% of the students to only get 11.5% of the money is not equitable. And, and so, we, I've spoken with Delegate Quarterman and Delegate McKay today that, that we're probably going to be bringing in proposed amendments to correct that. We've also, as Mr. Sauffer knows, I made a big point of this to the other small counties when we were at the last legislative committee. So, there are other counties that are as equally as interested, particularly Charles County. And one of the benefits of Charles County being interested is that they are a democratic, they have a democratic delegation and the majority of the legislature, of course, is, all the leadership is Democrat. So, having, having a coalition of them and us working on some of these issues is really very helpful, and I think some of the other smaller counties are going to come along. The hearing on this bill is on Thursday, so, and I know that there are going to be several county executives there, as there were last year, touting the bill. There are a lot of amendments that people want still, I mean, that, to adjust various things in the bill. They haven't put in yet the amendments that were adopted last year that overall are good amendments. We expect that those will be re-adopted on this bill. But the only small county that the chairman has asked to come is Cecil County. So, so it's even more important that, that we have a say, and Senator McKay and Delegate Quarterman are very interested in this. The other inequitable thing about, about it, I mean, that's the thing about the big counties getting too much. Then there's a provision that the little counties, under 20,000, would be able to use some of the funding for their pre-costs, the early startup costs, and that it seems that it would be more equitable, and we talked about this last year, if, if they raised that amount from 20,000 to either 30,000 or 40,000, so that this county, Charles County, Carroll County, maybe even Hartford County, would then be able to get the benefit. It would basically mean all the counties that weren't in the big six that are covered by the bill, that they would all be able to use the money that way. It doesn't create any more money for the smaller counties, but it just gives a little more flexibility. So, those are the big issues that we see looming about this bill. And you can see how thick it is. It's tedious reading, I assure you. I mean, you can see, I have marked it up in many, many ways, and I'm sure that Mr. Trotta has as well. So, of course, the other big bill that hasn't appeared yet is the, the Kerwin bill or Excellence bill. We're understanding that that bill may not even come in for another two or three weeks. So, it's going to be pushed to the end of the session, and, and then it will be a hurry up and better look at it quick and make points now. I did go yes.
Ms. Cade, I'm hearing rumor that could be a 200 or 300-page bill?
Yes, I've heard a rumor that it's a 200 or 300-page bill, because all the formulas have to be described in language, and that's not very easy. And, and, and I don't know how much of the policy, the thought of the, of the Kerwin will be included in the bill itself, too.
Do we anticipate, I mean, we know what the governor's budget is, we know what the authority of the legislative bodies can do with the budget. Do you anticipate anything in that bill to be substantial changes to dollar amounts for, that will start July 1st, which will be FY '21?
I think that this, I think that what was adopted last year.
The $58 million.
Well, it's not just the $58 million, it was the $225 million or something like that. That's already in the budget.
Right.
So, so what is in for next year, or, yeah, for the coming year, is pretty well fixed.
That's what I understand.
Yeah, and I don't think that you're going to have a big shakeup about that. It's, it's about how you phase in the future.
Much more about FY '22.
Yeah.
Mrs. Cade, may I ask a question?
Surely.
I may have heard you incorrectly. Did you say that this 200, estimated 200 to 300-page bill may not have much of the Kerwin recommendations in it?
No, no, it will, it will, no, what I'm saying is that the Kerwin philosophies will be reflected in the bill, but how much their text about why you do these things.
Okay, the rationale.
The rationale, yeah. I went to a hearing, a briefing yesterday, and, and I have to say, Dr. Kerwin is an amazing guy, and how he has maintained his energy and enthusiasm about this Kerwin, I mean, about this whole proposal. He believes in it deeply, and he really, you know, he'll start, and he tells how, how our schools in this state are only in the middle ground of achievement in this country, and how the schools in our country are only medium in the world, and, you know, how critical it is that we do these things. And, and the real, the real, I think the, the thing they've looked at most and are emulating most is what Massachusetts did about, what, 10 years ago? The Massachusetts miracle. And where, and now Massachusetts is achieving way up in the world achievement. When you look at Finland and Shanghai and those other high-achieving areas, Massachusetts apparently is kind of up there. So, I think there still is a belief that, that those elements that, that are in the Kerwin, and I'm not going to go over them tonight because you've heard them more than once, and you'll be hearing them again, that those, those elements are really what it will take to make our schools, which I think, you know, when I hear, hear, I'm very, very proud to be identified with all that's going on here, but that, that these are the things to, to make a big leap in our, preparing our kids for the world that they're going to be living in. And the, they say over and over that it takes all of those elements. You can't say, well, I like this one, let's do the four-year-olds, but not do career and college readiness. We can do the poverty thing, but let's not pay the teachers more. I mean, all those things, they're saying you can't do one without the other. So, that's, you know, so there'll be a little tug-of-war about that because some of these things are very expensive. So, that's all preliminary to what bill comes in, and maybe by the next time I'm here, there'll be a bill and maybe there won't. Today, the governor's bill, a lot of the governor's bills came in. I haven't had a chance to read them yet. They hadn't even printed them yet, so I couldn't read them off the computer, but, but he is, his Kerwin-like bill, his education bill will be different, but sort of alike. His building bill will be a little bit alike and a little bit different, and, and then he has a bunch of other bills. So, those are all to be explored. What usually happens is that they may take pieces out of the governor's bill, but, but the legislature will really, their bill will dominate over the governor's because of the political balance that we have in the state, and, and that if they pass a bill soon enough in the session and they send it to the governor, if he doesn't sign it, then, or if he vetoes it, then they have time to override that veto. So... So hopefully, there'll be harm, some harmony as we work this through, and that the governor and the, and the Democratic leadership won't be this far apart. They might be this far apart, and that they can work so that everybody's happy with what comes out. Just to touch on a few other bills that, that are in, there's one that is put in by the, the President Emeritus Miller and the new president of the Senate, which usually means it's like a good chance of going somewhere, and that's the digital advertising tax. It's, it's, I don't quite know that much about digital advertising and how you know how much anybody does and how much they're grossing from it, but this would provide a tax on digital advertising, much, most of which would be dedicated to education. So this is one of the few things they're talking about as a new revenue source to help support the, the big education proposal. Another bill, it's kind of interesting, I believe probably when a parent or somebody comes into school, you, you take their driver's license and swipe it, is that right? With those new driver's licenses that the federal government's making us all have, there's a whole lot embedded in your driver's license, your social security number, apparently, and all kinds of other stuff. So this bill says that you can't do, you can't keep that information, that once it's swiped, you'd have to, you cannot use it to sell, you cannot use it, you can't retain it, and it covers a lot of other places as well as education. It, it's just something new to think about. So I don't know where that bill's going to go. I don't know how big a problem that really is. I don't know what you do with the information that's swiped in, whether it is retained.
Anything with the information other than to identify the person and to be sure they're not on a list of-
Some school systems use it to identify registered sex offenders, so it, there are, there's software that will do that as well.
So, I mean, this is the kind of thing you learn about when you're down there, because these are new issues that, I mean, I don't know anything about digital advertising revenues, and I don't know much about this, but, so, but it's going to lead to a lot of discussion. There's a bill in about special education, who pays for lawyer's fees and that sort of thing. It's in every year, it's always one where we take opposition, because it, more and more, there's an attempt to have, and this one would allow the court to award attorney's fees and costs, including expert witness fees, to the family. And so we'll watch that one closely, and I know that Mr. Trotta has a lot of concerns about the cost related to all that. There's another bill, a very vague bill that comes in, and we get, we get a lot of these kind of like free-liners, and this is one pager, but the kids must submit, students must submit a certificate of dental health. Well, it doesn't quite say what dental health is, it doesn't say what the certificate is, it doesn't say what would be done with the certi, well, it does, it says you'd have to report on it and so forth. But, but that's the kind of thing, you know, every legislator has been in schools themselves, most of them have children in schools, so they all have ideas about what education should be doing, and so you get a lot of, of bills that are, you know, somebody's idea of a concern, and so their solution is to ask you guys to do one more thing. There's another bill on, in, to establish a restorative schools fund, and the purpose of that would be to provide grants to local school systems and schools for training, and implementation, and evaluation of restorative approaches that build and sustain positive learning communities. Now, this is put in by some responsible legislators, but it does seem like it's not, I mean, I would, I'm not sure I would bet this will go through, but it's showing this concern about using restorative practices, because this would establish an ongoing freestanding fund that would be used just for that purpose. There's another one in for teachers that want to teach dual enrollment courses in the high school, so that they would have to, they, they could either have a master's in the field, what the qualifications would be, to, to teach a dual enrollment course at the high school. They would have to have a master's in that field, or a master's and had taught a college course, and had professional development in college teaching, and been observed by college, by the college that they were going to be sharing with. I don't know if that's a real issue, but it's, it's something that they apparently needs to be defined.
Some of the worst teachers are in colleges.
Well, I didn't say that, you said that.
I'll say it. We've all had them.
Then another bill, it has to do with sidewalks and safe alternatives. It would make you report every year on students who are within the walking distance of a school, and did they have sidewalks, bike paths, paths, other safe ways to, to walk to school. And, and somebody suggested that the IAC is going to start involve in taking account of, of safe access for, for students, being able to reach the school safely. And there's another bill in that would allow 16-years, 16-year-olds and older to authorize immunizations for themselves, in cases where parents won't allow the children to be immunized, that at some point, they can make that decision for themselves. So there's, that's just a sampling of the bills that are in. So you can see it's going to be a busy 80 days, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions. You've probably heard more than you really want to hear, and I'll be back next month to tell you more. I'm actually doing this instead of my February meeting, so that I, it won't be till early March that you see me again.
Mr. Reiden?
Yeah, Mrs. Kate, I, I don't know if this has come up yet. I think maybe last year it was, they spoke to, it was from Senator Pinsky. It was something about a requirement for teachers, new teachers or teachers to be board-certified within seven years of their-
That's one of-
Instead of, instead of a master's degree, you have to have board certification.
That's part of what the Kerwin report recommends. Now whether that will be part of what the bill calls for in far-out years or not, I don't know. There are some people who believe very strongly in that certification, and there are other people who are very cynical, I find, about that certification. So whether that will be included in the bill, we'll wait and see.
My sense is, it comes from the fact that Senator Pinsky apparently has a relative that works for the Board Sir, Board Group. So, you know, I just, I found, when I heard this, I found it kind of interesting, that he was pushing it through the Kerwin group, so, okay.
We'll watch that one.
Yeah.
I'll keep you posted.
Thank you, because I see a little conflict there. That's okay.
Mr. Gessford?
Mrs. Kate, thank you for being here tonight. My question, you, you talked about that bill on Thursday that's being addressed. Will you, did you say there was only one county that would be representing a small county?
There's, the, the chairman of the committee has asked a panel, she has asked Pazam to have certain superintendents, I'm sorry, I don't know which county executives are going to be there. There are going to be superintendents from some of the big systems and from Cecil County, because that's what the chairman asked for.
Okay, so my question was, were you going to be able to, to speak or on that?
Well, either, if you, if you ask for amendments, either, either someone from the staff here, or I can present that testimony, or we can just submit it. My sense is, it's a good idea to present it.
So that's what Delegate Quarterman and McKay will be doing?
No, no. One of, one of, one of us would be presenting it. They would be supporting it, and they would be sitting in the committee, hearing it, and they will speak up and in support of it.
Thank you. What bill is that number, do you know?
That's House Bill 1. How's that for easy?
One? House Bill 1, that's a good one. Thanks.
I have a question for Mrs. Kate. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Have a safe trip, hope, and we look forward to seeing you in March.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Next up, we have our committee reports. Mr. Mackley, would you like to begin this evening?
The Washington County Association of Student Councils, since our last meeting, we've begun the process of electing the next student member of the Board of Education. So the candidates for that election will be announced within several days of this Friday, the 24th, and the election will last until March 10th. March 10th, it'll, it'll take place on March 10th here at CES during our General Assembly meeting. I'll send you emails with more information as we get closer to the date. And also, February 4th, we'll be having an information session for all the candidates. February 4th from 4:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., which will take place before and during this meeting. So they'll, all the candidates will be here receiving information about it. But again, that election will take place on March 10th.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Murray?
Curriculum and Instruction will meet on Tuesday, January 28th, at 4:00 p.m. in the Board Conference Room.
Mr. Pickford?
Finance Committee will meet next Tuesday at 8:00 a.m. in the Operations Room.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford?
Thank you. The Facilities Committee met this morning, and we have a few updates concerning the Downtown Project. Things are moving very long, according to Rob Rollins, who gives us updates on that. He says most of everything is now starting to work on the inside, dry walls are coming in, and so that project's coming along well. The Sharpsburg Elementary Project also is now under roof, and so that's going to start to really take off for this, this, the spring. Our community partnerships with Boonsboro is in, in process, along with the Smithburg Stadium Project, and we just finished up the Batting Cages Project at Williamsburg High School. Chad Criswell also gave a report on the developments that are in the area, and then we finalized the upcoming summer projects, and I've asked Jeff and his team, Rob Rollins and Mark, to give all of the board members an update on those projects that will be happening, so that you know those for this coming year, this coming summer. And there is a lot on that list, so I know those guys are working hard to get everything, so hopefully, they'll be, they said they'll be getting us a report, but they're going to give us a list of all those items, so just wanted to fill you in. Our next meeting will be February the 25th at 8:00, upstairs, on the third floor.
Thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Policy Committee met on January 14th. We reviewed Policy KCE, that's the School Volunteers Policy, which passed on second read earlier this evening. The rest of the meeting involved working on the Purpose, Background, and Definition Sections of Policy ACA, which is the Educational Equity Policy, which we will continue to be working on at our next meeting, which is January 30th at 10:00 a.m.
Mr. Reiden?
Yes, excuse me. The HR Committee will be meeting Tuesday, March 24th, 2020, at 9:15 in the Funk Town Room. At this time, our agenda includes teacher recruitment efforts.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reiden. Okay, I'll move to miscellaneous business. We have consideration of future agenda items. You have a future agenda item proposal list. Coming up, our next meeting on February 4th, we have a joint meeting with the Commissioners that day. It is downtown, and then we'll be back here for our meeting on Jan, I'm sorry, on February 4th, we have a report on early literacy intervention. And then coming up in Monday, coming up in March, Mrs. Kate will be back with another legislative briefing. We'll have an update on the kindergarten readiness assessment. By that time, we'll be able to release that data and talk about it, and we'll be hearing the recommendation of the Budget Advocacy and Review Committee relative to our draft general fund budget. That's coming up in March, and then go into April. Are there any objections to the, any of those agenda items? If you have a request for something to be put on the agenda, please see one of the Agenda Committee members, Mr. Stauffer, myself, Dr. Bishop, Dr. Pew, Dr. Michael. That's it for future agenda items. We'll move right into board member comments. Mr. Reiden, would you like to start?
Thank you.
Mrs. Fisher?
I have nothing.
Mr. Gessford?
Nothing.
Mr. Stauffer?
Last Friday, I got an invitation along with two other individuals to speak to, by Mr. Trey Cobb, seventh-grade teacher at Smithburg Middle School. It was part of their student service learning hours that they get in middle school. It was basically about public policy and how to get involved and what citizens could do. So Mr. Huffman, the principal, spoke for about five minutes, Mr. Baker spoke, I spoke, and then we broke up into small groups and went to various classrooms. The students were very attentive, very polite, very respectful, and quite frankly, I was surprised that middle school students could be that quiet while, while three of us spoke. But it was a good session, and the kids asked very good questions, and, and it was just nice to feel like you were instructing again.
Thank you. Mr. Pickford?
Nothing for me?
Mrs. Murray? Mr. Mackley? Did I have nothing? Do you have anything that you'd like to say? Wouldn't like the last word? No? Okay. All right, then. We'll adjourn. We will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Good day.